Okay, it's seven o'clock. So let's call the order, the Village of Oxford Planing Commission, this day, September the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If we'll all stand, please play our respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam Secretary, if you please call the rule.
Ballard.
Here.
Flynn's absent, Gostor.
Gostor?
Gost- am I saying it wrong?
Gostor.
Okay, that's what I said, right?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Kilek?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
And Nak?
Here.
Flynn does have an excused absence, so there's no need to do a motion to excuse. So it brings us now to, all right. Let's, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a approved agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes stated August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Forward.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
You supported?
All right.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, was there any correspondence?
There were not.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody in the public that has comment?
We need not with them.
What's that?
Never mind, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong spot.
Okay.
Sorry.
So seeing that there is no public comment, we'll move on to our, to the public hearing that we have tonight. Before we have the public hearing, Mario, will you please go through your review up until the, up until the correct question? To the criteria of approval, review comments?
Oh, until the criteria of approval.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, thank you so much.
Just so that we're all understanding what the public hearing is for?
Your public, well, okay.
Because we're not in the public hearing yet, it's an explanation of it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we're here to consider, as noted, a special use sign review for seventy-two South Washington Street. This site is twenty-three thousand seven hundred square foot and it's occupied by the two-story Crenenton Medical Plaza Multi-Tenant Office Building. So within this zoning district of C-one core, a business has permitted one square foot of wall signage per linear foot of storefront, up to a maximum of thirty square feet. Based on the site visit and the, and the information, to clear up the information provided, the tenant is occupying two storefronts, so with a maximum of approximately sixty square, linear foot of storefront. So they're having a maximum signage, even though they have sixty feet, they have the maximum signage of thirty is what's permitted. The applicant has submitted an application for a channel cut letter internally illuminated wall sign. The sign area definition within the zoning ordinance specifies that the area is the entire area within a rectangle or square enclosing the extreme limits of the sign structure. The dimensions provided were a little bit more precise than this, it's, you know, the measurement of each individual component rather than the way we measure sign area. But based on the submitted rendering, the advocate appears to be applying for a forty-one point five square foot sign as we measure it. So technically there is a lack of compliance with the zoning ordinance, but the zoning ordinance does allow the applicant to request a proposed sign be considered by its planning permission as special use. So we're here tonight to consider this as a special use sign to allow for the installation of a forty-one point five square foot internally illuminated channel cut letter sign on the side.
Thank you, Mario. So with that being said, what I would like to do is now bring us now to the, to the public hearing. So do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Seven.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're in the public, the public hearing. Does anyone in the public have comments to make? And if they do, step up to the podium, give your name, address, and any comments that you have.
This is regarding our item?
This is regarding the sign, yep, that's right.
Just a point of clarification, so this is the-
This is for your role, this is-
This is the public.
This is, this is the public hearing, so anybody in the public can make a comment related to the sign itself, yes.
But are you the contractor?
Yes.
You might want to, yeah, he, he's here to answer questions.
So if nobody in the public has any comments to say about the sign, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. So we have a, we have a motion from, from Tom and then a second from, who gave me the second?
Peter.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, now we get, now we can get to the new business at hand. So the new business at hand is the sign at first choice, for first choice, urgent care at seventy-two South Washington Street. So if you would like to step up and talk about the sign itself, that'd be great. I thought maybe you might have had comments to make about the sign specifically, okay?
No, we're just looking to place existing sign, it is a channel lit existing sign.
Yep.
We did our best to condense it. Obviously, there's more parts of this one, but the urgent care has since changed its name. We're down to, the urgent care is actually thirteen inch letters. We've laid this out, I think, thirty different ways. And it was originally, we were told we could split it, and then we were told we weren't going to split it. This is the most condensed we were able to get it, so we still have it readable from any kind of distance. So that's where we're at right now.
I assume that the circular logo is part of the sign calculation. Mario, is the calculation, like, considered a rectangle that would go up over the top, like a complete rectangle?
Yes, exactly, that's, that's, that's the thing, is that we, when it comes to channel cut letters, you measure the extreme limits of the height and then extreme limits of the width.
Okay.
Just so that way, because it's just, it makes it simpler, because, you know, if you didn't have that, people would be measuring the internal, the entire thing of the H or something like that, so it's just easier this way. So are all the letters, like, first choice, urgent care, the circle, are they all thirteen inches?
No, just urgent care is thirteen inch, everything else is down on six inches. It's like a bare ground.
Also, first choice is six inches?
Probably glasses.
Probably except for the one.
The one.
Yeah, the one is a tall letter, so that's the one that throws everything out. The one is twenty inches, and he doesn't have it broke down to the S T, but you're probably ten inches on the C, and you're probably closer to six inches on the smaller letters.
This, from my understanding, so could you take that, I'm sorry, Lisa, but Mario, so if they took the first down, this is, I'm just, I'm just asking questions, so, for my own certification. So if they took the first down by size, would they, would they be within, you know, they said they took it down to the, you know, ten inches or whatever, would they, would that help out with the calculation, or does that circle? Potentially, but, you know, once again, it's hard to tell because of the, the distance between each individual component. The first itself is twenty point one five inches, so it would cut it down. I see what you're saying, like, if the one and the S T-
Right.
Were the same height as the choice letter.
Right.
But then, you know, it would save a little bit, but, but you wouldn't get a significant distance. Because if you look at, for example, if you look at the mortar line of the brick, the top of the circle, that mortar line, you drag, drag it over, it's only the very extreme limits of the one and the T. So you're not really saving, you know. Once again, part of this is possibly the way we measure the sign area, but the intent is, you know, if the applicant, the applicant is choosing channel cut letters, and so the background of the building lends itself to a part of the contrasting part of the sign. And if they chose a box sign, then it's the same size, and then it would be, you know, a panel that would be contrasting color, not the brick itself. So it's just a different choice. You have no LabCorp that's on the corner, what's their total square foot? That's got, it's got to be, that's got to be two. I do believe that they, I want to say they exceeded it and they did get a special use permit, well, I think they had a, I think they're just at thirty square foot, because I do believe they came and they did get some special use approval, not special use, they, they had a sign review for internal illumination, so that's all it was. I don't recall them being an actual special use sign to exceed it.
Mario?
It was not a special use sign.
No.
It was, it was, it fit within the, fit within our requirements.
It was just the internally look. Mario, would this applicant be able to, in the future, should they choose, switch out this style sign for a box sign of the same dimensions if we approve this tonight?
No, because the application for United is for the, this application in this particular configuration and setup, so it's not like a variance that runs with the land and something, they have the right to that on the signage. It's a special use, and the special use is predicated on the conditions proposed.
Okay.
So it'd be this particular sign.
Thank you.
So another, if, if, or, first choice, excuse me, were to leave, the new applicant that would have to come in would- Correct. Have their own sign, if they, if they exceeded the thirty square feet, then they would have to come in for a special.
Correct.
Okay.
So Mario, based on how you calculate the sign, is it because of, so from left to right, it's, it's wider and longer? Is that basically what you're saying, because of the circle, circle logo over to the right?
Basically, and then basically, you know, the, the amount of space that's, that's occupied in the upper, I guess you call that the upper left and upper right, of, on the other, on the other side of first choice. You know, if I was a graphic designer, I don't know if this is the right terminology, I think, you know, it's like the use of negative space in that, that area above the urgent care. And it's, it's also, I'm sure, it's because of, this is their particular font for their particular business, and this is a particular configuration for their, their business, and then, and their, 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 branding, their branding. And then they also want to emphasize that, well, it is first choice, it's also an urgent care, so that's something, but, so yeah, and I, I believe that the, the style and design of the, of the, the content of the sign, technically, you know, I see is, does factor in to the creation of the sign area, but then, so it's the choice of the applicant, and then that's why they're, they're requesting, they have the option of coming in front of us to request this as a, as a, as a option, and then if they need the, if you feel they need the criteria, then it's up to you to decide if that's appropriate. I can go over that criteria if you want.
Before you go over that criteria, I have a couple of questions. So is it, when you guys were designing the sign, knowing that the, it's, you know, it's, the maximum square footage is thirty square feet, were they not, and you're trying to get the wording and the verbiage, is that, would the circle and the logo, if it was reduced in size and brought over to, is there a reason why it has to be there specifically?
This is pretty much the standard layout we've done in all the other locations, this is actually the last location to be completed.
How many other locations have you done?
We've done six other, six others are done, seven is getting installed next week, and we're waiting to fabricate this one.
We have a total of eighteen.
Total of eighteen altogether.
So this configuration is basically your, the brand?
Yeah, that's the brand. So we did, you know, we requested by the city, we did break it up, and put it, this involves thirty square feet per unit, they had us redesign it, split it up over two units, and they came back and said, after we'd done that, made many revisions, they came back and said, no, it has to be in one unit, so we redid the one unit. This particular location's been drawn two dozen times, so we've squeezed every inch out of what we can, and obviously the first being a taller letter, and the circle being a little bit taller, that's even reduced greatly, that's technically larger than other locations. We, we have modified this every way possible, but still kept it to look like the original brand. Now, if you total up the pieces together, twenty-six point nine nine, so it comes out to. So it's being, the city measures it as a rectangle, that makes it difficult. We're not asking to get a lot more square footage, we're just trying to, to make this logo fit within the ordinance. We got it pretty close. And the tenant does have multiple spaces.
Mario, will you go through, will you go through your criteria, please?
Yes. So we do have our criteria, rather than requiring the applicant to try and meet the specific criteria of a variance, we have this, these special use criteria. So we look at things like whether the proposed sign would obscure the vision of drivers, you know, this is a wall sign, it's practically flush against the wall, so it's not, and it's not going to project a significant distance off the wall, so it's not going to impact the clear vision of any, any adjacent drivers. We make sure that the second criteria is making sure it's consistent material used for construction on other lots. And signs in the area have been recently installed with similar materials, even the LabCorp sign on the building is a particular, you know, metal channel cut letter sign. So it's consistent with those materials. We want, we want to ensure that no part of the sign extends higher than the height of any other structure, it will not, it's like two-story buildings on the first. And we look at whether it show, if this sign would be located so it blocks the view of other signs, and it does not, it's flat, it's a flush wall sign against, that doesn't project a significant distance out, so it's not going to block anything. So one other thing just to point out is, we also make sure that the sign is generally compatible with the overall community character, you know. So the, the sign is located in the C-one core, and the C-one core is our more pedestrian oriented downtown with historic structures. But, you know, recently we have seen a lot of use of channel cut letter signs on the brick facades within, in the downtown. So that, so this type of contrast is consistent with, like, the current aesthetics that people have been utilizing. You know, there are, and many businesses have chosen this, this particular mix of metal materials against a brick facade, so it's a, it's a contrast between the modern type styles and the materials of the more historic character. So it does seem to be consistent with what's in the recent aesthetic, the people, the businesses have chosen. In the C-one district? I'm sorry? In the C-one district? Yeah, in the C-one district, yeah, they've, they've been going this route. We do know, though, that as an internally illuminated sign, you know, the potential always exists to cause excessive glare if the light levels were extremely illuminated. It could be already harsh and distracting, so we just recommend, as we normally do, a photo sensor with an automatic dimmer being installed. It'll automatically control the sign's luminance level, the outside and the in-light levels. So based on the fact that the sign will not be obscuring vision of drivers, it will not block other signs, we do believe it's consistent with the, the approval criteria of the ordinance, and we would recommend it will contingent upon the installation of the photo sensor with an automatic dimmer.
Right, I mean, like, most of these rules that we have are basically like rules that say, don't be a nuisance.
Correct, it is correct, basically, because the intent of the sign regulations, like sign area, location, and size, is just to make sure that no one particular business is going above and beyond to overly, in an attempt to feel the need to call excessive attention to themselves and other business. You know, we want all the businesses to play on the same, same playing field, and so these, yeah, these are intended to not be a nuisance, to make sure that, you know, and they are a little bit more geared towards freestanding or, or ground monument signs, because those could be located in such a way to obscure driver's vision or to block other signs and that sort of thing. The wall signs and their size, you know, it is, it is a little tough, because a lot of businesses, the thirty square foot requirement, you know, makes sure that everyone's in the same playing field, but then some tend to have a larger tenant space, and it's just that this particular tenant building is, has the vertical stone column separating the two units. So in theory, they could center the sign in the middle of the two units, but they just didn't have that as an option. So again, they, they're choosing a configuration to maximize the amount of space they have above their door, it seems to be. Do you know how many two-unit places, built, um- Within that particular building, or? Yeah. Well, I do- Just wondering how many more are going to come back. Right, yeah, well, directly to the north of this, so the, at the corner of it, I do believe there's two units, it looks like their configuration was for a two-unit space, so another sixty-foot wide facade, so in theory, they'd be limited to thirty, so they might come back, depending on who, their proposed request. So it is kind of, you know, we can only review this application based on the ordinances that are in front of us now, and we believe that the wall signs and whether they exceed the standard sign area, that might be an issue we want to look at, if you wanted to add criteria that applies to that versus these that are a little more ground sign occupied, because while I understand it might seem like the method we use for sign area is, might not seem as accurate as, as some companies might think, you know, with McKenna, we have hundreds of clients, and I write zoning ordinances all the time, this is a standard practice in our, because if not, you have, you know, you have people with large typefaces and, and everything, every type of graphic configuration or orientation, and they would be, once again, measuring the inside of a G as, as a negative space to not get their sign area, so they could increase the sign in certain cases. This is, this is an attempt to, once again, have a consistent approach to measuring sign area. And the use of negative space is a, is a, is a valid use of signage, but in the end, we do think that they meet the approval criteria. It's an attractive sign, and, and I think because it has that negative space, it's not going to seem overly out of scale with the, with the location of two, like, it fits the scale of that particular tenant space too, so I think it's-
So I, I guess maybe my, my particular comment is this, is that, is that I don't want to tell business owners what to do, because it's their sign, it's their branding, but at the same time, we have the ordinance, our ordinance is thirty square feet, right? And for, not, not to say that just because I've been here for a certain amount of time, and I, we have never changed it, is that there's, there's a very specific rule that we have. Yes, that we allow variations, but I don't believe, I haven't, from the time I have been here, we haven't allowed a variation, a variant related to this. So my, I guess maybe my concern is if we allow a variant for this, and then the next one might be just a little bit bigger, the next one might be just a little bit bigger, and it's like, oh, it's not that much bigger, but you allow this person down the street to be able to do it. My personal thing is, it's thirty square feet, figure out how to get it in thirty square feet, that's, that's my personal comment, so I'll leave it, leave it at that. Go ahead.
I, I agree, when I was on the Planing Commission a hundred years ago, that, that was a huge discussion. And, and we were pretty adamant when people came back and asked for, you know, variances, if you will, to, you know, the size, the shade, the color, all that kind of stuff. And, I mean, I, I like the sign, that was one of the comments I had as well, you know, and that's why I asked, you know, how many other businesses are, you know, are going to come before us, and we have one right next door that could come and say, eh, you know, to mine, it has to be fifty square feet or sixty square feet, so that's, I'm, I'm pretty sensitive to that as well.
I don't, I mean, I don't think something like that size would even fit, I mean, if you're looking at what's already there, and this is actually visually looks smaller than what's already there, at least based upon what I can see at Google, like, it's literally a giant box, and this is actually, I mean, my two cents, a little more aesthetically pleasing than what they have. It looks like there are spaces for potentially one double, maybe two other double ones, but, I mean, the other thing to think is, it's like, all right, well, fine, if we want them to stick to the thirty, do you want a sign, like, I know they're not going to do it, but do you really want a, like, like, a sign on above every single door? Because then you're asking for a whole, like, the whole script mall potentially, you know, to all have three square foot signs, where if I would, I would rather choose one forty-two square foot sign than two thirty square foot signs. But, I mean, it just, I think something to think about, because I'm looking at it, I think it's an improvement from the sign that they already have, and I don't think that that sign is all that much smaller, bigger. Do you, do you know what the current sign size is?
Actually, I do believe the current sign would be consistent with a thirty square foot, because I think that's another sign that they get coming for sign review for internal illumination, but they didn't apply for a special use for a sign above the, the sign.
Sure, I have, I have.
Okay. So, my comment about that is, you described that you tried it and you couldn't do it any other way, but we don't have a way to understand that or gauge that. So I feel like I'm kind of in the middle between the idea of keeping it within thirty square feet, and yet it is, does have some aesthetically pleasing components, but I'm not convinced that, you know, you can't make this work within thirty square feet. So if there is a reason you couldn't, you haven't, to me, you haven't made a case to me that I understand.
The hardest part with this logo is your first S T is taller than your choice, and this is something we often run into, logos, if they have a tail on a Y or a Q or something like, like that, a lot of communities, they won't measure that, because it's not the verbiage, it's the tail, and that tail will take up or double the square footage in the way it falls. In the case of this one, the one S T is taking up a ton of square footage, and you have a ton of negative area on both sides for the first choice. So, and like I said, the Akmen connect, we'd already shrunk, we tried laying it out where they were in line, you lay it out in line, the urgent care gets so small, you can't see it. What's the purpose of an urgent care? To treat somebody that's got an urgent medical issue, and if we make it any smaller, then we're not serving the community, because you can't see the sign. If they can't find the urgent care when they need it, it's kind of pointless. So the branding of this particular client is first choice, and the Akmen Medical, in order to have urgent care any size at all, I had to keep it on top, the same way we've done all the other locations. Terms of size, this is by far the smallest, by far the smallest of all locations. So we've laid it out in line, we've laid it out stacked, we've stacked the care, same format, we have here is the same format, we have it all the other locations. We kept it aligned, just shrunk it as much as we possibly could, to the point that, like, the S T, I think the C is probably closer to ten inches, the S T are probably closer to six. I can't go much smaller and eliminate them. Be smaller than that, then I'm going to get into our making a box sign, we'll go back where we have. Personally, I don't find box signs that aesthetically pleasing, it's kind of like the last resort. Other than cutting out the name or logo and just making it say urgent care, then we're not writing who they are. So that's kind of the options that we're down to.
So I'm not a sign designer, and I'm not, I'm not here to critique the design at all, because at the end of the day, your design is the design, and has nothing to, like, whether it's pleasing to me or not pleasing, whether the old one's pleasing, whether the new one's better, to me, it's, it's relevance, it's a, that's not what we're here for. We're here because of the thirty square feet specifically. And if, if I think, if I heard Mario correctly, it is a box size, so basically it's a specific linear length, it's a very specific height, and it sounds as though the business owner's layout or design is exceeding that, which, once again, I'm not here to critique how their layout is, it just doesn't fit within the parameters of what we have. I, I look at it, and I think there's one small change that could be- at it and I think there's one small change that could be made to make it fit and make it work within the, within those parameters. I just have a, I just don't want to set a precedent to say that the next company that comes in and says, I want to, I, I would like to have a sign that's, uh, that has a variant as well because choice one has got it, uh, and mine's going to be able to. And the next neighbor says, all right, that's the next one. That's the only concern that I have. So once again, I, I like it.
To sorry, mind you.
Yes.
Do you, do you, the dimensions of the components, it's twenty-seven square feet.
I measured them. They're correct.
It's just the layout of, of that design, of that logo.
What's Akmed Connect as opposed to First Choice?
Yeah, it's, um, our occupational medicine franchise.
Okay. So a separate company?
I said, see if we've got our shirt has two designs.
Yeah. So the urgent care and occupational medicine.
I, I don't want to get into the design situation either, but, but it, it, as you were going through that, was there a way to reduce the, the circle and move it over above care? I mean, I, I don't want to get it too grouped up, but that would save you a significant amount of space. So do you want to speak to that?
I'm trying to visualize the things.
So, so kind of if you, if you, if you take this and, and either reduce it in or move it over here closer.
And if that's what you guys recommend, it's, it doesn't align with the rest of the E-Ton locations and it might look really clunky. I don't.
I, I understand. And that's why, you know, and I, I was, I, I was putting my tongue initially because I'm, I, I agree with Justin. I don't want to design yours. But, but I, it was, I, I didn't know if you had given that any thought and discarded it for some reason or.
I think it was part of one of the, the many things we were going back and forth on and it would look very, it didn't, to look.
Okay. Thank you.
No more questions?
I have no more questions. I have no more comments. Um, CJ, do you have any questions or comments?
Not on this particular matter. I guess going in the, maybe going in the future, Mario, if you wanted to say, um, you talked about people measuring the inside of the G and they wanted to assign like someone four, like three or four rectangles that they can use to measure a sign. Is that like possible, like a possible thing that we can do rather than just have it be in one square?
You, you can. They referenced the fact that at one point their initial application had one sign on one, over one tenant space and another sign on the other. But then it's, you know, technically we only allowed one wall sign. So then, because it's separated like that, is that one wall sign or is that two? Like how big do you make the rectangle? And how much do you separate it out? So then if you have a component of it, uh, in one area or another, that's another thing. But, but to answer your question, yeah, if you wanted to, you could make these other type of, uh, measurement criteria. Sometimes you don't, you know, with, with particular ones, uh, businesses and their proposed, um, configurations, we just say total square footage of thirty square foot and then they do decide. And then if you did want to go ahead and do individual, uh, un, individual, uh, geometric shapes, you could do that. So then basically the sign, that logo would be one shape and then the, the first choice, like, you know, it's.
Is it precedented? Like, does it exist?
It, it, it's rare, but it can happen. Uh, the reason is, is because the second you do, like if you say you limit it to two geographic shapes, somebody's going to say, I want three. You say three, somebody wants four, you want four. So, I mean, it is possible and I understand, but, you know, it's just, it's one of those things where like the, uh, the, the method, the intent of the method is, is consistent. The intent of this sign area method is consistent throughout many, many, many communities that I personally work with in metro Detroit and throughout the Midwest. And, and this is the way they usually measure it. And then, and because it's interesting because you, you know, somebody chooses a particular G with a long draping, uh, logo, uh, dropdown, you know, component of the G, you mentioned that. And then suddenly they decide to change it and then suddenly it's, it's raised up a lot more. So they just, and they maximize, there, there's ways to, to, that people compensate for. And, well, I, I would say that probably what this is, and forgive us for, I mean, this actually takes your application, but I, but I think that is, uh, you're looking at some of the things that within the special use criteria approval, there probably would be other better criteria for wall signs versus other signs. Because like this, I could see what you're saying in terms of like how you measure it and, right? Maybe see something like you take out the negative space or something like that.
Right.
Or does use, because there are other ways to do it. You could.
Right. To my, like, other members here, like, it seems insane to me that we're using the same criteria for a box and that we are for channel cut. Like those, those just seem like, we're, we're trying to avoid someone being a nuisance and we're ignoring the negative space offered in a channel cut line. It just, it, it seems like we're going to end up having a negative, like, do the opposite of what we're trying to do, which is try to like have all like a really.
Founder.
Right. Have a sign that's screaming at us. And I don't. And, and maybe that's something that we can discuss in the future, but, but it, it just seems crazy that that's the.
That's my, it's where we are.
Awesome. I really appreciate your comments.
I see that's.
CJ, appreciate you. Uh, Regina, do you have any, you have any questions or comments?
No, no. I, I, you know, I, no, not at this time.
Okay. Leslie?
One more thing I would say is that I'm, I remain unconvinced that the size of urgent care needs to be that big for people to find it. I don't think that's a compelling argument. Um, I just wanted to add that one comment.
Okay. Tom?
Uh, I'm also.
Okay. Um, so I, I would say at this time, what I'll do then is, um, I would like to make a motion to approve the variant for sign, for the sign at seventy-two Washington Street. Contingent upon recommendations outlined in the McKenna letter, um, specifically concerning the photometric sensor with automatic dimmer.
I second.
Mr. Regina, if I may, if.
Yes.
If you would mind, instead of you saying you were in variant, maybe use modification.
Modification.
That way, if that's okay, just that way.
Thank you for that. I'll, I'll definitely take. So, uh, modification.
Another comment?
Um, so we have a motion on the table. There's sport, so I don't think we can make comments now, can we?
You can.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, 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 no. I, I want to make sure to follow them.
Yes.
Uh, did you also, we, we didn't get anything from the DDA, right?
No.
Did you also want to get anything from the DDA from their comments or, or no?
No.
Okay. It's fine.
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ballard?
No.
Gostor?
Yes.
Hylak?
No.
Schultz?
No.
The Noc?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. All right. Uh, that now takes us, we have no old business. So, uh, leads us now to public comment. Uh, is there anyone in the public, uh, that has a comment? Seeing, uh, seeing none of that. Um, consultant or administrative comments?
Why do you not hear anybody?
Mario?
Uh, no, at this time, other than, I think you had a good discussion and, and I appreciate those, that feedback. And it does seem like, you know, maybe if we're going to take this opportunity to drop in some language with regards to the lighting, maybe this might be an opportunity to, to specify requirements for, um, uh, wall signs versus ground monument signs. And then two, if you wanted to relook at how we define sign area, you know, we could do that too, if you want.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I, I feel like I made my, like, statement already. It hasn't changed much from the last couple of minutes. Um, and you, you brought up the concern that like they could ask for more, more squares in the future. Um, that doesn't really seem that like compelling of an issue as like, I, I just don't think that many people, that would ever become like a realistic thing that people ask for six different, different squares. But, um, I, I, I think that.
You're very long enough. You, you see a whole lot of stuff.
Right. But so, three or, three or four seems, seems fine. Like, actually, I'd probably go three on the high end. Um, and, and when they come back with a, with us, another sign, I, I just hope that it doesn't look worse than the one that we have in front of us right now.
But that's a personal judgment issue.
That's right.
As opposed to the ordinance, which is to apply equally to everybody.
Sure. And we're trying, and we're trying to set up something that like essentially asserts like the best interest of the, of the community through an ordinance that applies to everybody.
Which, which I think is why looking at changes to the ordinance is in order. But we don't have that today.
Right.
That's right. We use the tools that we have right now. So it's, um, yeah, okay. Uh, so now it brings us now to, uh, reports. Um, unfortunately, we don't have any reports from the township, since we don't have any representatives. Uh, ZBA?
Other than that?
No meetings. Uh, DDA, which, uh, Joe was not here to kind of give us any information on the DDA.
And they did get their bids in and they're going to start with sidewalk projects and that. Um, and they got the scarecrow fest coming up in October fifth.
Yep.
That I do know. That's what it.
Yeah. Awesome. Uh, lastly, now this is all like commissioner comments. If we have anything else, uh, uh, comments to say?
Want me to talk?
Go ahead.
And, and things specifically like the sign, anything regarding the downtown area, can we make it like a, a, a standard to get comments back from the DDA?
Yeah. Or some kind of report.
Yeah, it'd be really helpful.
Could be an email.
That's fine. Yeah.
Like in something like, because we've always asked, you know, any sign that's come before us and, you know, can we get something from the DDA? And we just forgot to ask for it this time. But I think it'd just be nice to, you know, since we're playing in their space.
Yep. Uh, so now it brings us, uh, to return. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.